I just got that. I just got it now.
I know, that was still... Alright, this time, do you want to throw?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call the order of this meeting of the May 16, 2019 Nashua City Planning Board. Secretary, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber. Here. Alman David Tenza. Alman Marian Mozilagoya. Steve DuCrane.
Present.
David Robbins.
Present.
Jerry Rupucci.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
Here.
Okay, so we obviously have a quorum, we have everybody here. So we have in front of us some minutes from the May 2, 2019 Planning Board meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion either way as to whether they're... can be accepted as submitted? Take a minute if you need. Ms. Harper?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Alright, so you have a motion to accept as written, do you have a second on that?
Second.
Alright, second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then any extensions?
One.
One.
Extension.
Two. Two extensions, Ed? Got that? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, Communications, Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board. You have three items in your packet tonight that you didn't get mailed to you. They all pertain to case number two. The first is an email from the Economic Development Director, Tim Cummings, generally in support of case number two. You might want to read that when the item comes up on your agenda. You have a communication from... to Chad Brandon from the Engineering Department, from Joe Mandola, and that's concerning their comments on the project, and that's attached. And then lastly, you have a revised stormwater management report prepared by Fieldstone for case number two again. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Alright. Report of Chairman, Committee, Liaison, Ed?
Yes, just one thing. Nashua Regional Planning Commission has moved from Merrimack to Nashua. They're at 30 Temple Street. Nice area, they had an open house this last... yesterday morning, they had an open house for the people that regularly go there. It's a nice area, nice place to be now, too.
Okay.
Convenient. Thank you.
Alright. Okay, so I'll... Can't tell... Is everybody here from an applicant, or is anybody here just from general public? Raise your hand if you're just general public. Okay, alright. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting and hearings. So after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant and staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. It'll be the time for you to express any concerns you may have, or ask any questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. I'll then ask for any relevant follow-up question, or I'll then ask the board if they have any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. If so needed, allow one public member to come forward after that. If there's more than one person, they can get together and sort of elect one representative to speak, and respond to only those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end. The board will resume a public meeting, at which time will deliberate and vote on the application that's before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand, and to not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, and considering all applicable approval criteria established in our Nashua revised ordinances for special... conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I thank everybody at this time for their interest and attention. I ask that if you do have a cellphone, that you go ahead and silence or put it on vibrate at this time. Okay, so old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plan, case number one, National Millyard Associates Incorporated owner, application and acceptance of proposed subdivision of two lots into five lots. This property is located at El Pine Street, Sheet 77, Lot 36 and 37, in Ward 4. I'd ask of the board, does anybody have a chance to review this application and determine that it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
We take jurisdiction.
Alright, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Rupucci, do you have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any... or any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Alright, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Hayner Swanson, and our office is located here in Nashua at the Congress Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of Nashua Millyard Associates. We've come before you seeking subdivision approval for two lots into five lots. If you look at the plan I've put up on the board, what I've done is the existing state of the two lots, I've highlighted in yellow, so they're both somewhat kind of triangular lots, and what we're proposing is highlighted in red to cut them into five smaller lots. Very quickly, some information about the lots. They are lots 36 and 37 on Map 77. Combined, they total .262 acres in size. The zone we are in is general industrial with mixed-use overlay. Both lots front on Pine Street, and they are abutted by tracks in the millyard and the Broad Street Parkway. Kind of to summarize, the way we arrived at this point is during the design and construction of the Broad Street Parkway, there were some land takings from the Millyard Associates, and when it was all said and done, what we were left with is those two lots that I've highlighted in yellow. They're both non-buildable lots, they're both very small, they're basically... it's kind of useless land. So what we are proposing is to subdivide them into those five smaller lots. If the plan is approved and recorded, then Nashua Millyard Associates, who they own both tracks, they will take each of those five lots, and they will transfer them to the abutting lot owners by deed. Once that takes place, then the parent tracks of those owners, what they can do is they can use an instrument called the merger parcels form available in the Planning Department. And very simply, the way that works is when you have two land tracks that fall under the exact same ownership entity and they abut each other, you can work at the Planning Department and the Assessing Department, get a new lot number, and simply record it at the Registry of Deeds, and that merges it, as opposed to going through the entire process of creating a consolidation plan and coming before the Planning Board. So it's a simple way to just merge two lots. And basically, once that's done, that will clean up kind of what was out there for the leftover two remnant parcels that resulted from the Broad Street Parkway construction. We are asking for one waiver. Mr. Chairman, as I typically do, I'd like to read it just to get it on the record.
Sure.
We are requesting a waiver of Section 190-282B9. This waiver regards showing on the plan specific existing conditions on and adjacent to the site, including topography. We are requesting to not show the existing conditions of the two tracks, and to not show the topography of the two tracks. The purpose of this plan is to subdivide the two remaining remnant tracks into five tracks. These two non-conforming, non-buildable lots were created from takings associated with the Broad Street Parkway construction. Upon approval, the five newly created parcels will be conveyed and subsequently merged with the appropriate abutting owner tracks, thus eliminating these two now non-conforming parcels. Showing the existing topography and existing conditions on the two parcels and in Pine Street, where no construction is proposed by this plan, would only cause Nashua Millyard Associates to spend additional funds as they continue through the approval process. In summary, we feel that the above requests are reasonable and meet the criteria outlined in Section 190-282 subdivision plans of the Nashua Land Use Code. We also feel that the above request meets the spirit intent of the Nashua Land Use Code, and a strict enforcement of the above section would pose a hardship to the applicant. Thank you for consideration in this matter. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Can you just step through quickly, like, for each of these lots, which parcel or lot they're...
Who would get what?
Yeah, how's the...
Sure.
Just so we have kind of a record of where the intent of them going is.
See, I just need to approach that.
Yeah, that'd be great, you can grab Ed's microphone or something while you're up there. Thanks.
So this lot here, proposed lot 46.
Yep.
Now, I'm 99% certain on this, the Millyard's attorney couldn't make it tonight, he had another conflict, he knows better than I do, but I'm almost positive, this lot will merge with this guy right here. This small lot right here will merge with that one.
Okay.
This... let me go over. This slot will merge with this one here. And this lot will merge with that one. And I believe this lot here, this lot I think is going to this one as well.
Oh, so the two of them would go to the... the one with the building on it?
Correct. So basically, it gives these abutting lots now, it'll all give them some amount of frontage on Pine Street, whereas they... before this all began, they didn't have it, because they were just, you know, abutted up against, you know, a different lot.
But essentially, they all can go somewhere, because it'd be kind of undesirable for one of the little ones to go over.
Right. Yep, and that's why I wasn't part of creating the new lot lines, but that's how they were divvied up to more or less give... to make, you know, somewhat sense of giving, you know, what small parcel to the bigger tracks.
Okay. Other questions from the board, from the applicant? This time I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none. Any further questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? Okay, anything else from the applicant that you want to... okay? Okay? Sure, Mr. Rupucci?
Does the staff have a positive recommendation on this?
Yes.
Is it here?
There's really nothing, like, written in the staff report.
You guys are involved in this whole thing, and it's all good for you.
Community development is involved with it, and we would recommend this for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Okay, any further questions? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the hearing, move into the public meeting. So we just have a sort of a five-lot subdivision here, explained by the applicant, seems pretty straightforward, the intent seems positive to me. Anybody else have any discussion items they want to talk about in the meeting? Mr. Varley?
I'll make a motion if there's anything else to add.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve new business number one subdivision, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plant... or, sorry, in NRR Section 190-138G, with one stipulation, being a waiver request, requesting a waiver of Section 190-282B9, and that request, reading, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve, as stated by Mr. Varley. Do we have any second on that? Second by Mr. Weber. Any discussion? Chair, Mr. Rupucci?
The right portion of this abutting Pine Street, the drawing looks like it has no sidewalk there. Maybe it does. But if it doesn't, do they need a waiver for that?
Well, this is a curb cut, right? There's a curb cut, and then there's a sidewalk, and there's curb cuts. Looks to me like it has sidewalks, except where that curb cut.
Okay, then it's good.
Yeah.
That's all good. Nothing for it.
Okay. Any other discussion items? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Thanks. Okay. Alright, so, new business site plans. Case number two, 267 Main Street Realty LLC owner. Application and acceptance of proposed amendment to NR 1625 to construct 1,827 square-foot coffee shop with a drive-through and associated site improvements. Property is located at 267 Main Street. Do we have a motion that this application is ready for the board to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Peterson to take jurisdiction, have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Rupucci. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Prunier &amp; Pearlman here in Nashua. And we have a full team for you tonight to present the proposed Duncan at 267 Main Street. I'm representing 267 Main Street Realty Limited Liability Company, whose members are Joe and Rick Carvalho, who are here in the front row. Chad Brandon is gonna walk us through the plans and the engineering of the site. Giles Hamm is here tonight from Vanessa and Associates, who did the traffic analysis. And Jackie Daly-Bruceau is our architect, who will have a presentation for you and have samples and renderings and elevations for the board. I would like to introduce Joe and Rick Carvalho. If you don't know them, you need to go to Dunkin' Donuts more, because they are the owners of the Canal Street Dunkin' Donuts, the East Hall Street Dunkin' Donuts, the Dunkin' Donuts at Seminole Plaza, and the Dunkin' Donuts that's in the Shaws in Seminole Plaza. Joe and Rick are local owners, they're not corporate franchisees. They are hands-on, onsite every day in one of the four restaurants that they have, and they're hoping to open the fifth one with an approval tonight. Joe and Rick may comment at the end. Rick, in particular, often were concerned about queues and traffic with Dunkin' Donuts, and so Rick is very good at queue management with Dunkin' Donuts. He can turn customers and cars in matters of seconds. One thing, just to... as a preliminary matter, Mr. Chairman and members, is I just want to touch on the environmental piece of what's going on, because this was an old gas station, and there were spills in years past, and we have been working with ExxonMobil and their environment engineer, Kleinfelder. ExxonMobil was a prior owner of the property, they bought the property from the Gibbs Tire and Gas Station. And the good news here is that what Kleinfelder has been doing over the past few years, they've been injecting a certain chemicals into the ground to... I lost my train of thought. To address the petroleum molecules that are in the ground, so to become in compliance with DES standards, to bring the standards below the DES thresholds. And we had Kleinfelder prepare the April 18 report that was in your packet, and you can see that they're... they are confident that the current round of treatment, that is, you may have seen some activity on the site very recently, they are hopeful that it will be successful, and they believe that they are very close to concluding their remediation work. The... if there's any more remediation or groundwater monitoring in their report, they do say that that can be done... at this point, it's so successful, that can be done concurrent with any development of the site. We have provided a site suitability report, because we're in the mixed-use district, and I'm not gonna read the report word for word, but I will tell you that we check off a lot of boxes that the mixed-use and the D1 district call for with respect to the master plan and designing these sites. And we have worked with staff a lot, we've had a lot of meetings with Roger and Linda and all of staff, and to their credit, they have called out for us to really take... make sure we have a two-story facade, put the parking in the back, screen the front of the building as much as possible to give the effect that it's as close to the sidewalk as possible. We have a brick facade, we didn't have a brick facade to start with, we have a brick facade now. We have an infill development, we have sidewalk improvements and crosswalk improvements, so we really think that we're addressing the concerns that are raised in the master plan in the D1 district. Mr. Chairman, we have been through the staff report and the proposed conditions from both staff and engineering, and we agree with those, we have no objection. And so that's my intro, and so I would like to have Chad start us off with a detailed review of the plans.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. My name is Chad Brandon, I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. As Attorney Pearlman explained, the plan that we have before you this evening has gone through an extensive review process consisting of numerous meetings with city staff, including staff at the Community Development Office. We've met multiple times with the Engineering Office, Traffic, and Fire. We believe this process has created the best development plan for this project and for the community. Attorney Pearlman gave kind of a brief summary of the history of this property, and the property has been vacant for some time, I think everybody's familiar with the site. And so this proposed development will ultimately rejuvenate the area. The subject property is known as Tax Map Parcel 93-13. It's situated at the intersection of Prospect Avenue and Main Street, consists of 0.43 acres of land, and is in the D1 MU zone. The existing conditions of the site consist of the remnants of the former gas station that occupied the property last, and this includes a steel building, eight fueling stations and fueling locations, a canopy, as well as access and parking areas, including two curb cuts out onto Main Street. The development of this site will include the demoing and raising of all of those existing improvements, and the construction of a new Dunkin' Donuts restaurant consisting of approximately 1,830 square feet. Along with the restaurant, there will be a drive-through window and associated site improvements. As Attorney Pearlman stated, this will be a two-story building. That ultimately was a detail that came out through the review process with the Community Development Office. And the final layout will provide for safe vehicular and pedestrian travel to and from the site. Other site improvements that we have with this project include internal access aisles, walkways, landscaping, lighting, drainage, and utility infrastructure improvements. The main entrance to the property will be off of Prospect Street, as shown on the site plan that we have before you this evening... excuse me, Prospect Avenue. The... at the main entrance, customers will have an option of entering the drive-through lane, or ultimately entering the parking lot area. The parking lot area will consist of 13 parking spaces, which includes one handicap-accessible space. The main entrance to the building will be situated at the northwest corner of the building, which has that facing the main entrance to the site on Prospect Avenue, and it also does favor the intersection of Prospect Ave. and Main Street. Pedestrian traffic onsite will be handled by the construction of a sidewalk on the west side of the proposed building. There will also be sidewalks constructed along Main Street. The sidewalk along Main Street will consist of closing the two existing curb cuts that are out there today. There will also be a sidewalk constructed along Prospect Ave., as we are proposing some improvements in that area as well. The drive-through for the project will provide for 260 feet of stacking distance. This equates to about 13 vehicles for stacking. The drive-through design also provides for a partial bypass lane that would allow cars to exit the site and head south down Main Street. The site will be serviced by municipal sewer, Pennachuck Water, natural gas, and underground utilities such as electric phone and cable. And the lighting design for this project consists of a blend of pole-mounted and building-mounted lights, and the design does comply with all of the city standards. The landscaping and buffering for the project will be accomplished through a series of fencing and planting some landscaping. Along the west and south borders of the property, we've agreed to install a six-foot-high white vinyl stockade fence. And then along the front of the property, basically at the right-of-way line, we're proposing to construct a brick and wrought iron fence that's more of an architectural component. That is a consistent element that you will currently find in the downtown district, but will also provide some shielding of the drive-through lane and those activities from anybody traveling along Main Street. The drainage design for this project consists of essentially curbing all of the accessways and parking areas, and constructing a closed drainage system. We're basically gonna capture all of the improvements from the site, we're gonna route the stormwater through an underground detention system, which is a chambered system, a concrete system, that'll mitigate all of the rates of flow leaving the site, so that there'll be no increase in runoff over the pre-development conditions. That system does tie into the combined sewer and water system along or under Prospect Avenue currently, but that has been reviewed by engineering. Along with all of the onsite improvements, this project does propose considerable offsite improvements. These improvements include... These improvements include considerable work with Prospect Ave. We basically worked closely with staff on trying to provide some improvements to that intersection. The improvements consist of adding an additional lane, so there'll be two lanes exiting Prospect Ave. By adding a lane, it does help with the alignment of Prospect Avenue and Prospect Street, which is across the road and the Main Street intersection. Other improvements in that area will consist of relocating the pedestal sign, or excuse me, signal. Again, constructing a new sidewalk along Prospect Ave. Reworking the crosswalks in that area, we'll be redoing the crosswalk across Main Street. We'll also be redoing the crosswalk across Prospect Street and there'll be a new crosswalk for our, the main entrance of the project. So these are all considerable improvements offsite that I think will benefit not only our project, but just the traffic flow in that area as well. Along with the intersection improvements, there will be some signal timing modifications and we do have the traffic engineer here tonight so he can address any questions that the board may have relative to that. With the offsite improvements that are being proposed, we are depicting a right-of-way dedication on the plan. So we'd basically be dedicating a portion of the property to the city that would encompass those, those improvements. And as Mr. Pearlman stated, we are happy to report that we have worked diligently with staff over the last couple of weeks and I do believe we have a favorable review from engineering and other departments relative to this project. We are in agreement with all of the staff recommendations with one modification that I would like to add. And that is when we submitted the original application for this project, we included a stormwater waiver in working with engineering and going through the review process of this plan. We were able to come up with a design that meets city standards, so we will withdraw, withdraw that waiver. We no longer need that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have at this time, or I can hand the floor over to another one of our project professionals.
Okay, thanks. Questions from the board? Mr. Pucci?
Anything from the fire department? Have they reviewed this? Are they comfortable with, really, the only access is Prospect Street, right?
Yeah, the fire department has reviewed the design and they are happy with the layout and I think staff could verify that as well. They've been at a couple of the meetings and there's been no issues with, you know, with fire relative to this project. I think there was an email and I may have it in the file.
I didn't see that. Thank you.
There is a letter in your file, in your packet from the fire marshal dated April 2nd that they had no concerns with the proposed project.
Thank you.
The stacking, you talk about the 16 cars. Is that what you said?
Thirteen cars, yeah.
That's from where to where? Is that up to the order point or is that up to the order delivery window?
I believe that's up to the window.
Okay. All right. Other questions? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boy, this is engineered pretty tightly, isn't it?
It's, I mean, it's a, it's a tight site and we've tried to accommodate a lot of feedback and requests. The Prospect Street improvements have kind of tightened the window a little bit, but we, it meets all engineering standards and we've run all the vehicle templates through the site. The drainage complies with city standards, so we meet all the design requirements for this project. But there's, there's a lot going on on the property.
I, it certainly looks like it. Just, just a couple of questions. It appears as though, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if the, the stack from the service window goes back to the drive-through ordering point, then vehicles will block the access that comes out onto Main Street. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's a partial bypass lane, so it's, it's not really intended to be a primary exit to the project, but that would be blocked if, if people were queuing through that area.
Okay.
Really, the reason why we didn't curb that section is so that the, there could be access to the dumpster location, if you see where the dumpster is located. And then it just offers kind of a secondary exit to the property for people who are utilizing the parking lot and maybe going south on Main Street. They can, they could utilize that bypass lane to leave.
Well, I, I personally appreciate, because it's, it's something that I look at, the fact that there is an escape lane in the sense that there is some way for people to get out and not be blocked into the, most people not blocked into the, you know, if something were to happen that was a concern, some kind of public issue. As far as, so what I hear you saying is most of the, all of the in-traffic and almost all of the out-traffic is going to go out onto Prospect Ave. Is that correct?
That's what I would anticipate, yes.
Does it, you know, Dunkin' Donuts and there's some other places are, are very, very popular. I don't think that's, that's a controversial thing to say. And I have seen Dunkin' Donuts in the area from time to time, different times of the day, 15 cars backed up. And what I'm a little bit concerned with is, great location for this. Boy, the hospital's right across the way, a lot of people. I, if this passes, I, I hope it does wonderfully well. I'm just a little concerned about coming in and out of Prospect Avenue. There's not, it's about 24 feet wide and you're trying to get cars coming in this way and staying to the right and cars coming around and not a great deal of space once you get out onto Prospect to stack. You know, you might have three cars there and then you've got cars jammed up coming out of the lot. At, at high-traffic times of the day, are you going to have a police officer there or do you see a problem with that?
Well, we do have the traffic engineer here this evening, so we're bordering close on that being a better question for him because I do believe they, they did an analysis on the stacking for the site. But the, my understanding and in talking with the, in reviewing the traffic report and ultimately in talking with the owners who also run a couple Dunkin' Donuts in the area, they, they don't anticipate any issues. In fact, they're very good at what they do and I think when they get up here and explain some of the, you know, timeframes that they're able to accomplish in the drive-through process, I think that, you know, that would maybe speak to your concern as well. But we don't anticipate, you know, an issue with Prospect Street in the intersection. I think the offsite improvements, you know, certainly have something to do with that. It's a, it's a, it's a benefit. Cars will build the exit as a free right out of there, so, you know, there will be vehicles having a free movement at that intersection, I believe. So I'm not anticipating any issues there, but I think the, I would ask the traffic engineer to address that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Be happy to, when he or she is available, we'll speak with him. Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Thank you. Couple of questions. Is there going to be a handicap push button at the entrance?
I believe that's required.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
The architect's here. She would be a better one for that question, but I'm pretty sure that's required.
The second one is there's a lot of foot traffic in this area and it's part of the smart streets. Do you think it would be a good idea to have a bicycle stand in, on the north sidewalk area? Just a thought. It's not a requirement. I wouldn't put a stipulation in there at all. It just might be because of the area that you're going to be in, there's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of bike traffic in that area and it might, you just talk it over with your committee sometime, not today, just something that might be a smart thing to do is put a bike stand there for people that are bicycling and wanting to stop.
No, I think that's a, that's a great question and I will say, in fact, I, I thought there was one on here because I do know that the traffic engineer recommended that we put one onsite, so we will put one onsite.
Okay. One of those things to just, I wasn't sure. On the exit arrows, it might be a really good idea to use a high-temperature, the one on the right-hand exiting, high-temperature because the amount of traffic flow there, just a painted surface may go away. The paint may just be gone, whereas a high-temperature paint, I know it's more expensive, but it might last a great deal longer and you won't have to repaint. Just an idea, not required.
I think, I think the...
It is required.
Yeah, and I think, and in fact, the latest revision to the plans, I think that's one of the engineering comments that, that they made is they, they asked for the thermoplastic paint.
That's what I'm talking about.
So, yeah.
Okay. Just talked about that area where there's a exit from the site and it's part of the drive-through area. Do you think a "don't block this area, paint it on the ground" be a good idea? Don't block, in other words, the car is "don't block this area"?
It'll be striped through that area, so it'll be defined as a, you know, a separate lane. Sometimes when you stripe things like "don't, don't block it," people don't think they can drive over that exit, so we'll paint it as a, as a lane and I think that'll help.
That would, yeah. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, I'm just, hope you can clarify for me what the intention is of that, talking about the same spot there, because I thought I understood you to say that if, if it wasn't for the dumpster being over there, you would have curbed that out. So is, is that opening an intricate part of the design or is it, is it just optional either way in your opinion? The reason I ask is because the one on, on West Hollis Street kind of has a similar turnout as you're going around the turn into that stack. And I think they have it closed off. I think they chain it. I'm pretty sure they do, but it, you don't have the ability when you're in the stack lane to turn out into the parking lot, the same circumstance here. So I, I'm not saying I think it should be one way or the other. I'm just saying clearly in that Dunkin' Donuts, it's blocked. So what, what's the motive of it, I guess is the question?
So when we laid out the site and we designed, you know, the parking area and everything, the primary purpose that it's opened is for access to the dumpster. At one time, we had that closed. After we opened it, I think it's nice to have that option for a secondary exit out of the parking lot. Frankly, once we had that, you know, on the plan, I think that works. I am familiar with the Dunkin' Donuts that you're referring to. I want to say that that's open and I do know that the Chick-fil-A on Amherst Street has a similar situation and it's open to the drive-through area. It's not a requirement to be open, but I do think it's a better design now that we have it that way on the plan. I think it just offers some flexibility with people that may want to exit the site. If, if there's nobody queuing in that area, they could, they could utilize that bypass lane and take a right and go down, go south down Main Street. I don't think there's any harm in that. But the primary reason why it's open and I think the, the basis of your question was we initially designed it that way to have access to the dumpster.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Just a quick question about the remediation of the petroleum. So what, I guess at this point, what is the timeline as far as retesting and all of that?
I'm going to let Attorney Pearlman answer that one. Thank you.
Not soon enough for my client. Let me, for the record, Andrew Pearlman for the applicant. As best I can answer your question, there were a series of, two additional injection events on April 15th, April 15th through April 18th and then May 6th through May 9th. Kleinfelder will be back onsite to collect samples on May 27th. They test the samples, they come back with the results, it gets submitted to DES. If those samples show that we are below the DES threshold for the organic compounds, then DES will want another set of testing. They want testing kind of, they want two, two samples separated by a little bit of time. And if all that goes well, then we get a no further action letter perhaps later this year. DES may say, no, we're still elevated. We need to do another round of injections, but we're very close. We are hopeful, talking with Kleinfelder, that we have a no further action letter from DES with continued groundwater monitoring, monitoring, monitoring by the end of this year.
And...
That's, let me just say that, that's by no means dead certain. You know, the, they, it may go on further, but in talking with ExxonMobil and Kleinfelder, that's the impression we're getting.
And you are anticipating on keeping the monitoring wells?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Oh, sure. Yeah.
I know one of the plans had showed that perhaps you would have to move or remove one of them.
Oh, no. Those wells will be onsite for some time under a groundwater management permit with DES and the responsibility will transfer to the Carvallos to conduct testing, submit those every spring to DES. And if, provided the, we're below the thresholds, we're, we're good. If some, for some reason, over time, that we're above the thresholds, then they're going to have to take some more remediation.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify the monitoring wells. We, we are going to be removing, I think, one or two of the monitoring wells onsite, but we'll be doing that in, in collaboration with the environmental company. So if another one needs to be put in, in order to continue the monitoring, then that'll be done. But I think they're talking about only one or two monitoring wells needing to remain and, and I believe that they're the ones that, that we can maintain. So there, there is notes in the plan saying that some will be removed. There's also notes stating that we'll be working with the environmental company to make sure that, if there's a need for one, that we put back. That also was addressed through the engineering review process in the last couple of weeks, so.
Thank you.
Before you head down there, so I have a little bit of a concern where you come out of the doors of the, the building and you're, you've got that crosswalk from the sort of concrete to, that gets you to the Prospect sidewalk, sort of down to the left on the plan here.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, human nature, you're causing someone to walk further away from the crosswalk to get across Main Street and then come back, right? So they got to go left for a while and then, so is there anything to stop them from coming out the door, taking a right and walking straight across that turning movement? Because that's the issue we have with drive-throughs is as folks are coming out of the drive-through, they picked up their food and they're making the turn and it, right at the corner, if someone's coming around the corner when the car is making the corner. I mean, we've seen like little fencing or bollards or, you know, something that causes the people not to be able to walk off that right-hand turning movement.
So are we talking about this crosswalk right here? In the plan?
Yeah, right at the, right at the...
The corner of...
Yeah, so if you come out that door, that's the main entrance, right?
So the main entrance is in this corner right here?
Right. But you want them to come out, go to the left and cross over, right?
So we've, I mean, we've honestly, we've, we've gone back and forth on the location of this crosswalk and I can kind of explain it to you from a couple of different directions. We initially had the crosswalk designed in this location here to align with the sidewalk, so they just walk across.
-with the sidewalk, so they just walk across Prospect Street.
That's what our plan shows, actually, that we-
Oh, we-
Ours is here.
Yeah, so the plan was revised, that plan that's on the board. Do you mind if I approach and-
Go ahead, yeah, just bring the mic. Yeah, so I see you have it here now, up this corner. But do you have a concern with the site distance there?
No, part of, so would we, we init, the plan that you have shows it here.
Right.
And we had a cross, we had a kind of a walkway across that landscaped area. When we went through the engineering review, there was, there was some feedback as to anybody walking along Main Street is gonna take that B-line to the main entrance. And so, this is actually gonna be the area that's probably practically gonna be used more.
Right.
I tend to agree, I tend to agree with that, so we agreed to make the revision to put the walkway here and the crosswalk there. The nice part about the crosswalk being here is it's visible from somebody that's, that parked and taking their order, so they will always see somebody in there. If we put it around the corner in here-
Yeah.
-then they would be blind. And so, that's part of the reason why we kinda snuck that further in that direction.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's different than our plan, we have it back here.
Yeah.
Because we've also seen like, you know, making a barrier here so that the, the pedestrians can't go there, they have to go that way and then across over, but, yeah.
Other questions? Mr. Pucci?
How many windows? How many drive-up windows?
I'm gonna let the architect, she's gonna present the plan, so I think that that would, she would be able to explain that.
There's, there's one drive-up window.
One drive-up window, yes.
Okay, so, in the unlikely event, which happens just about every time I ever go there, something is not ready and a driver has to pull up to wait for something. If something is not ready for somebody in the stack lane at the window in a timely way, what happens next? Where do they go to, to wait?
They could have them park in the parking lot if they had to. I mean, that would be the place that they would go.
Okay. They'd go, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for the civil engineer? Hear from, do you wanna, maybe we'll hear from traffic and then the architect?
Perfect.
Good evening, Giles Ham with Vanessa Associates out of Andover, Massachusetts. Chad stole a lot of my thunder, so I'll be a little bit retentive, but it's okay. And I'll clarify some of the questions that, that were asked earlier. So, we've done a very detailed study for the project. It's been reviewed by Wayne Husband, your city traffic engineer, who's provided comments. When we look at a Dunkin' Donuts sites, I really kinda focus on two issues. Does it have adequate drive-through storage and how does the access and egress work? That's really what we need to focus on, especially with the queue storage. So, in this case of this project, we monitored existing Dunkin' Donuts in Nashua, and we feel very confident that the thirteen-car storage is adequate for the site. Typically, you see an average queue storage of about six vehicles, and the maximum that we saw was, was thirteen vehicles in the morning, and that only happened for a very, very brief period, so we're, we're confident that that is adequate storage. In terms of accessing egress, I think Chad did a good job explaining it to, but the main access and egress is through the signalized intersection of Prospect Avenue, and that's a controlled access, and it gives us capacity every cycle to get out safely, whereas if it's an unsignalized location, you're kinda waiting for a gap. We get that created every, every cyclical time, so it helps get out of the site relatively easily. The, the right-turn exit onto Main Street is really just a slip exit from the drive-through. It's really not a main function of the site in terms of exiting, but it also provides access to the dumpster, which is, which is important for the site to be successful. Chad talked about, in terms of mitigation and minimizing the queuing, we're providing a second lane on Prospect Avenue exiting to the signal, so that'll double the storage capacity exiting the site in terms of queue storage there.
That's widening too?
So, we're widening, we're widening Prospect Avenue approach, so right now, there's one lane approaching, there'll be, there'll be two full lanes. It's probably about eleven-foot widening for that, for that turn lane. Okay? And we're also, we're also closing a curb cut onto Main Street. So, you think about when it was a gas station operation, you had a lot of turning movements on Main Street. This project really takes the turning movements off of Main Street and puts it through a signalized location, which is better than safer than the prior condition you had there. In terms of other things that Chad touched on, we're upgrading sidewalks along the frontage. We're upgrading crosswalks in the area for safe crossings and, and, and making it more direct to cross Main Street. There's an exclusive pedestrian phase there, so you can safely cross the street. You just press the button, it stops all the traffic, and you walk across safely. So, it's a very walkable site. Sidewalks on Main Street and crosswalks in exclusive pedestrian phase. In terms of traffic operations, the intersection operates at Level Source B operations through the build conditions, and that's a relatively good operating condition for this location here. We concur with staff recommendations. Staff recommended that after we complete these roadway changes and improvements that staff inspect it and, and, and agree with those changes before we get our certific, occupancy. And we feel it's a safe project as planned and with the changes that we work with on city staff. In terms of a couple of questions that came up, we did recommend bike racks onsite, and I talked to the owners, and they will have bike racks on the site, so if it's not on the plan, it'll be added on the plans, there'll be bike racks on the site. In, in, in terms of, Dunkin' Donuts are busy sites, but when you think about this site, we have exiting onto a signalized location, which gives us that capacity to get out on a regular basis. But also, think about the traffic as you go through the drive-through. Exiting traffic is metered. We don't, you don't get a heavy flow of traffic exiting, it's very metered. You, you pick up your food and you exit, and the next guy's waiting, gets their food and exits, so it's, it's really metered. And we feel with the second lane on Prospect Avenue, that there's adequate storage there for that traffic to exit safely.
Mr. Pucci?
Help me understand this second access, so that- The incoming and outgoing traffic is coming from Main Street.
The second, this, are you talking of two lanes on Prospect Avenue, or, or the exit?
Yeah, well, when people come to those Dunkin' Donuts, they're primarily coming from Main Street.
Right.
They're turning onto Prospect Street.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Prospect Avenue.
Prospect Ave, yeah.
So- Are you saying that having the, the extra lane that is exiting Dunkin's and going to Main Street, is that what's gonna happen? There's gonna be two lanes of travel towards Main Street?
Yeah, you want me to show up on the plan?
Sure, yeah, you can come on up, just bring the mic.
So, it was, it was not part of the original plan, but in, through discussions with staff, right now, there's one lane coming out. In the future, there'll be a left-turn lane and a through or light-turn lane. So, there'll be two lanes exiting where you only have one lane there today.
Okay, and that's all I had about that. Just to understand that. So, if the stack does back up, the stack is actually-
So, we don't expect stacking to back up exiting the site?
No, no, the, the-
Entering, entering, we have, we have thirteen vehicles of storage.
I, I know exactly what you got.
Okay.
What I'm asking you is, when it does stack up, it's just going to be on the incoming, it's gonna back up onto the incoming lane of Prospect Street?
Backs up from here, from the, from the pickup window, back to there.
And what happens when that's not, there's no capacity there? The cars go onto Prospect Ave?
So, right, so-
Entry pot from Main Street.
So, we feel the thirteen vehicles is adequate based on what we've seen in the community. If it becomes further than thirteen vehicles, it would back up onto, onto the entering on Prospect Avenue, but I think that the owners can explain to you how they process the drive-through in an efficient manner in order, in order to minimize those queues.
Mr. Varley?
Just a follow-up question in terms of the stacking. You mentioned that you looked at a number of other Dunkin' Donuts and specifically drive-throughs. How does the capacity here, the thirteen-car stack, how does that compare to other drive-through locations that you looked at?
I think that the one on, on Broad Street probably had a little bit longer in terms of, in terms of queue storage, but I've seen sites with, with less queue stores than this, but we feel this is adequate at this site here.
Mr. Robbins?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Would, would I be, I'm, I'm trying to do this in my head and, and measure with my pen. Would, would there be room for about three cars in each of the lanes going out on Prospect Avenue, three on the left and three on the right?
I think that's correct, yeah.
Before, before one get back?
So, that would be able to store six cars total.
Six cars on Prospect Avenue outgoing?
Right.
Okay.
And again, you know, keep in mind, you know, a lot of Dunkin' Donuts sites exit onto busy streets at an unsignalized location. And, and they're, because the Dunkin' Donuts are there, they're there because it's a busy, busy site, busy street, so it becomes difficult to turn out onto the Main Street. We have the benefit here of having a signalized location, so on a regular basis, you know, we're gonna get twenty-five seconds of green time to exit onto Main Street to minimize those queues.
Green time sounds like a wonderful thing.
But it's, it's, it's there every day, it's there every minute.
There we go. The, the, the other question I have is, I'm, I'm just thinking about the size of vehicles today, you know, hundred-and-ninety inches, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-ten, two-hundred-and-twenty inches, and long-wheel bases, and making that turn, that hundred-and-eighty-degree turn in, in a fairly short time and place, and, and not an overabundance of open space coming in and going out. And I, I just, looking at this, it seems as though there would be a good deal of, could be a good deal of congestion when the facility is busy. And I'm just wondering how you, you've thought about that, and whether my concerns are relevant, or, or-
Well, this, I mean, there's, there's pavement markings out there to direct traffic. I'm sure that the site engineer has run auto-turn in terms of the turning movements for the vehicular traffic, so this is, the, the, the lane widths are adequate, the circulation's gonna be fine.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the improvements at the intersection on Main? Did you say there's new signal, traffic signals, or are you, are you-
So, the, what's happening there is, so we're widening Prospect Avenue-
Right.
-to have two lanes, so that'll require us to move a, a signal post, to relocate that post.
Right.
There'll be new sidewalks along the site frontage. There'll be a new crosswalk crossing Prospect Avenue that is not there today. The crosswalk crossing Main Street will be more of a direct route, it's kind of a, a large angle there today. So, those are all the changes we're gonna make. We will be looking at, we've already looked at it, but we will be looking at all the signal timing to make sure it's adequate in terms of the pedestrian crossing and the yellow phases and the all-red clearances, so that'll all be reviewed as part of this process.
Are the, are the walk, don't walk, the audio, visual parts of it, are those being up, are they being replaced, or are they, what's the-
No, I think we're using, we're using what's out there. My recollection is when we were out there about a year ago, one of the, one of the pad buttons was not working.
Right.
I don't know if it's been fixed since then, but that's something we would look at. So, we're gonna have a signal designer out here and look at all the functions of the signal operations. We will submit plans to city staff to review, and upon their review, we will construct the necessary improvements, and after they're constructed, they'll be inspected by city staff to make sure they're, they're properly implemented prior to the occupancy of this project. So, we're actually doing quite a lot when you really go down that list.
And is it, is it a four-way, like during the walk?
It's, it's a-
All traffic is stopped, it's not like-
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's an exclusive, it's an exclusive pad phase. When I was out there this evening, I was only out there for about ten minutes, but I, I, it seemed like it might've been on-call every, every, every cycle, so again, we'll look at that, we'll make sure there's adequate crossing time based upon the latest standards.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's gonna be, from the corner of Southern New Hampshire to the site, diagonal crossing, kinda like we have on Main Street.
Well, you, no, no, it's, it's, it's-
I know you're not intending it, but I'm wondering if that's gonna happen. They're gonna go from the northern corner of-
Well, right, right, so, so- We've, through the design plan, we're directing them where we want them to walk. That aside, it's an exclusive pedestrian phase, so when you press the button, everybody stops.
Right, so if that happened, they'd all be stopped in all directions, and kinda like the Main Street crosses, yeah?
But, you know, we're very confident, this is a safe, for pedestrians, this is a very safe plan.
Because I could, I could see a significant amount of traffic from the hospital, potentially.
We, we expect there will be a fair amount of walking traffic, absolutely.
And then, is this signal timed with the next signal up on the northern signal, or the southern?
It is coordinated there.
Yeah, I, yeah, we, so Wayne sent me the signal plan probably a week or so back, and, and yes, it's coordinated. We had our signal expert look at the, the timings, and we'll be making recommendations as subsequent, if we get local approvals, then we would be making those recommendations for staff review.
If that timing needs to be changed post-construction and occupancy of the facility, how does that happen? Is that on the project?
I believe there is a provision that i- if something like that would needed to post-development, that we would be back there and, and make the necessary changes to the signal if, if that was needed. We're not walking away from the project.
Yeah, we, it's actually part of Mr. Mendola's comments, that will be included as a condition of approval.
Okay.
We could take a moment to talk about that a little bit more. I think the response, the latest response from is a note on the plan, which I don't think we have in our packet. And Mr. Mendola asked for that it be revised, because you cannot put the burden on the city.
Yeah, we don't, we're not opposed to the, I think there was three last kinda cleanup comments that we received this afternoon from Mr. Mendola, and we certainly appreciate engineering taking the time to look at things. We, we really tried to make all the revisions and, and have the review for this evening, so that was very helpful. The note that we have on the plan, I just have to find it, states that, and this is, that this terminology was, was not acceptable to engineering, but I'll read it, and then I can talk about what we were planning on revising, and, and maybe that's appropriate right now. The note says, and bear with me, my eyesight has kinda been failing lately. "The traffic engineer shall reevaluate the Prospect Ave-Main Street intersection six months after opening day to determine the accuracy of the assumptions made in the initial transportation impact assessment. Should the post-development analysis be inconsistent with the assumptions made in the traffic impact analysis, reasonable measures that do not impact the applicant's business may be taken by the applicant to assist the city to mitigate the unacceptable results." And what we were going to take out is "to assist the city." Basically, this would be something that the applicant would, we would make adjustments to the signal timing and so on, as Giles mentioned, after getting, reviewing that with engineering and coming up with any adjustments if needed.
This might be okay for, for yourself, too. The- The, have you evaluated the sort of nighttime light level at the crosswalk across Main?
No. We haven't done any off-site lighting evaluation. When we do, I mean, when we do site plans, the charge honestly is to do site lighting onsite and make sure we don't have any light pollution or any impacts off-site. So we have not evaluated any lighting of the crosswalks. What I can tell you is the crosswalk currently exists, and we're improving the alignment because right now the crosswalk goes more diagonal across Main Street-
Right.
-and, you know, the plans that we have will better align that, so it'll be a more perpendicular path for pedestrians across Main Street, which is a safer way to cross the, you know, the road.
Okay, I know there's pole lights on-
I think there is a pole light there, but we didn't do an evaluation of, you know, what's the lumen level and so on.
Yeah, what the hours of this facility are?
So the facility will be open from 4:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Other questions for traffic or civil?
I have one.
Ms. Harper?
Not to beat, you know, a dead horse, but kind of where Jerry was going earlier, how many, how many vehicles would fit in the incoming lane on Prospect Avenue should traffic overflow from the parking lot?
So, I mean, just speaking to that in general, the 260 feet doesn't get you even to the main entrance to the site, because if we counted that area, it would impact the people's ability to access the parking lot. So there's, the 260 feet ends short of, you know, short of the main entrance to the property. So there's at least another vehicle or two that could stack onsite before you technically got to Prospect Ave. And then along Prospect Ave, I think it's four or five vehicles.
You can get up to four cars, that.
Just because I'm a loyal Dunkin' customer, there are a couple sites that at certain times of day, they get, they can get stacked up on the road.
I think one of the things, and again, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't want to step too far out of my realm, but I do know, and I'm very familiar with the city, and there's a lot of other Dunkin' Donuts sites around and on both sides of this project. So this isn't the first one, it's, you know, there's going to be other opportunities for people, you know, hopefully they all come here, you know, for my client's sake, but there's going to be other opportunities. So I think that this is unlike, this actually may take the load off of some of the sites that are having queuing issues. It's another site that will share maybe that traffic.
Thank you.
Mr. Pucci?
Is there more of a presentation coming or is this the end of it?
We do have the architect here this evening.
I'll call the architect.
Really, I don't think this is a question for you, maybe for Attorney Promon, but-
Go ahead.
The people who own this own the one that's down near Advanced Auto Parts, correct? Right inside the mall there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, in Seminole Plaza.
Are they going to close that or is that going to stay open?
I asked Joe that question today, and the answer is maybe, maybe not. There's four years to go on the lease, they're going to see how they do as the site opens. If it continues to work in their favor, they'll keep that going. The Seminole Plaza site, if that site is not doing well, then they'll probably shut it down when the lease is over. But the answer is to be determined. If I may, before we get to our architect, I would like to have Rick Carvalho come up and talk about stacking, queue management, and what he, what he does, what he specializes in, just because there's been a lot of questions on how to manage the windows and the ordering and whatnot.
Sure.
So make sure you state your name and address.
Yeah, Rick Carvalho, 267 Main Street Realty, 267 Main Street Nashra. So I know there's always this big concern about the drive-through stacking, the drive-through times, the drive-through, you know, how quickly, how much, how long people have to wait. So recently, over the last year, two years, three years, we've been recognized as the best operators of drive-throughs in the state and potentially New England for Dunkin' Donuts franchises. And how do we do that? Well, obviously, we have timers in all the stores. If you go into the one on West Hollis Street, it's usually in red. The one on East Hollis Street is always in green, and that's the one that we run. So when we look at comparisons to other stores, the one that we should spend most of our time looking at is the one on East Hollis Street. The Dunkin' Donuts average is a little bit over 151 seconds per customer to get from the drive-through menu board to the drive-through window and gone. Our average time from our, in our busiest day part, which is from roughly 6:30 a.m. to about 8:30 a.m., is somewhere in the 85-second range. We do that by overstaffing our stores. You don't go into our stores and see them understaffed. We do that by creating a better workflow and a better, you know, ability to get things done quicker. We have somebody just handing stuff out the window, so you don't have to wait for the cashier to count to, you know, 68 cents and change before they get you back your coffee and your, and your donut. We put multiple people on our sandwich station so that when you order a sausage, egg, and cheese, somebody's making it and somebody's grabbing it and handing it out. And, you know, we also monitor these locations via camera, so at all times, even if we're in another location, even if we're in another state, we're watching the cameras, we're able to look at it and say, hey, what's going on over there? You know, you're getting backed up, let's keep it moving, let's, let's make this, let's get this going. We're able to do this because we're not just franchise owners, we're franchise operators, and a lot of our neighbors, other people in the city, unfortunately, don't operate at the same standard because they have so many locations that they just kind of see it as an investment. For us, it's not an investment, it's our, it's our life. So those are the, you know, essential things that we do that make sure that our business runs and ticks at the highest level possible. You know, I don't know if my dad will come up here and talk, but we were awarded as one of the top 10 franchises, period, in the Dunkin' Donuts, in Dunkin' Donuts brand, in Dunkin' Brands a couple of years ago. And again, we just do that by being in the stores every single day. We don't even take vacations together, we haven't vacationed together in eight, nine years, and I don't remember the last time we both took a day off, including Saturdays and Sundays. We are always there, and we make it our priority that our drive-throughs run as well as they can, because we don't want to have the reputation that some of these others have. And to go along with what Chad said, I think that's one of the biggest things that gets missed, is that having another site is what is going to alleviate the pain in those, you know, at West Hollis Street, on Broad Street, on, you know, if you ever felt like there was a need for it at East Hollis Street. That's what's going to alleviate the pain is by creating more so that people can get it elsewhere and, you know, go from there. Questions? Yes?
I agree with you on the East Hollis Street Dunkin' Donuts. That's the fastest Dunkin' Donuts there is.
Thank you very much.
If you staff it, there's a million people working in there, no question.
Absolutely.
I still see cars back up on East Hollis Street sometimes.
So, you know-
That's a short stacking lane there, right? So as great as you guys are, cars back up onto East Hollis Street at busy times. What, you don't own the West Hollis Street store, right?
No.
So I can't dump that on you, but cars back up onto West Hollis Street virtually every morning. So you have great engineers, you guys know what you're doing, you're very smart people, but isn't it possible that this is just too much for this location and this size lot?
So I don't believe that the size of the lot will really determine the issue. If the stacking's the issue, the stacking's the issue, and if we have the stacking, then there's no, I don't really see the argument for the drive-through as a whole. One thing I will say is I think if you look at the traffic count numbers, West Hollis Street is substantially higher than this area of Main Street, East Hollis Street is slightly higher than this area of Main Street, and this is providing more stacking. Like you said, East Hollis is kind of tight, I think there's 11 or 12 cars there. This one has 13, plus, as he said, at least two more onsite, four more on Prospect Ave, before you can really get to the busy road that is Main Street. So I think there is substantial amount here.
When you say stacking, you're talking about from the service window, right? Not from the ordering location. Am I right about that? So from the ordering location, the stack is four or five cars less, probably six cars less, if you look at this. The ordering location-
Yeah, it should be four cars between the ordering and the service window, correct? Five, including the one who is ordering, correct?
Right.
Yeah. So if you count that, then five, yes.
I'm not trying to beat you up.
No, no, it's not a problem. I guess what, I'm just trying-
You've opened a million of these.
I understand.
You know, the one on New Dunstable, New Dunstable Road-
Yep.
-is excellent because it's way off the road. But we went through the same thing with that one. As soon as they opened that one, they closed the walk-in one that's next to Christopher's there. You know what I mean?
Oh, no, I know exactly the location.
I have no doubt you're going to close that, the Dunkins down on, near-
Seminole Plaza, yep.
And you have every right to do that, but I think that's, that, the reason I'm bringing that up is because that's going to enhance the use of this one.
I can appreciate that.
Right? So I think we have to take that into account a little bit. It's, there's a lot of people going to, you own that one too, right?
Correct.
So there's a lot of people in there. I like that one too, and it's, but it's, and it's usually busy, people just walking in, it's busy. So the, the, the drive-through is an absolute requirement for you guys, right?
Absolutely.
It's not an option to not have a drive-through.
Right. It wouldn't, it wouldn't make any sense, I mean, we couldn't make the numbers work.
Because this plan would not work.
Correct.
Okay.
But I guess, you know, the other thing to think about there in that location, in that Seminole Plaza, it may not seem like it, but that Shaw's location actually is, would 100% take a lot of that business, that, that 300 Main Street location would, would take away. You may just, you know, you may think that 300, that Seminole Plaza location is so busy. I can assure you from a business perspective, it's really not as busy as it seems, and that Shaw's location would definitely be staying, barring some, you know, crazy thing, but the game plan would be to keep that one, which would take away some of that business as well.
So Rick, one more question for you.
Yes.
Another advantage of East Hollis Street is when somebody does have to pull over, they pull right up, they move up two cars and they're in the parking lot. They're right there, right? In this one, they're going to be driving around the building, crossing over where the entrance is, and pulling into where the parking area is in order to wait for their food. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Do you have any other Dunkin' Donuts that are like that?
We only have the one drive-through location, so, you know, I can't, I can't speak to others, I'm not sure exactly what, you know, is on Amher Street and all those, I really don't, you know, I don't spend too much time. But I will tell you, if I make too many people do that, they're going to stop coming, so I've got to figure that one out ahead of time so that they're not waiting long enough that they have to do that. And that would be our game plan.
Do you have a feel for how often that does happen?
Honestly, right now, our longest wait at the drive-through this morning, so the Dunkin' average is over 150 seconds, our number-one longest wait was 169 seconds. It did not happen once today, hasn't happened in, honestly, maybe occasionally a Saturday morning where somebody orders eight sandwiches, it might happen, but it has not happened at our location, I can promise you, this week. And that's sincere.
So that's not a multiple time per day occurrence?
For us, right now, it is not. I can only speak to that.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, sir.
Do you own the one, the Dunkin' at 111A Main Dunstall?
No, we do not. We only own Main Street and then East Hollis Street.
Other questions? Great. Should the architect was available?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. Jackie Brusso with Aronian and Associates Architects, we're out of Smithfield, Rhode Island. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the building elevations. I have a board here, too, which is the same thing that's up there.
Make sure you hit the mic, just because it's recording. You can pull it down if you need to. Thanks.
Okay. So we started the development per our brand standard image, which is, is new in the last year. Through development with the, the team, we've come to a solution, design solution that we feel fits in with the neighborhood. We're using brick veneer and CMU veneer accents. We've created a line at the first and second floor with the use of a cornice. The second floor is a real second floor, which will primarily be used for storage as we really only need the first floor, but it was a requirement for the second. The materials on the building, we're using brick veneer, CMU veneer. We have a couple small areas of a wood, it's a fiber cement board made to look like a wood clapboard siding, just as accent pieces to kind of bring in some of the brand imaging. We have obviously the Dunkin' Brands signage, which we can't get away without. We have a couple canopies over the main storefront entry, main storefront areas and the entries at the first floor. They are orange. The ones over the entries have tiebacks because they're, they're an actual awning canopy, so they project out three foot six, so someone standing there fiddling with something is protected from the rain. The two over the main windows are only just an accent, they, they only come out a couple, eight inches or so. We designed the first-story facade with the storefront idea in mind, so we have open windows. That whole main corner there that faces the parking lot and the side street are kind of open, letting a lot of light into the store. The drive-through side, on the other side of that wall, I do have a floor plan here if anybody wants to see it. On the other side of that wall is our service area, which houses all the kitchen equipment, so we couldn't really put any real windows there. But we, and I also have a, an image of the streetscape with the brick veneer wall with the wrought iron fence, too, if you guys want to see that. That will be blocking the drive-through queuing and some of that bottom part of the, you know, even the window itself from public view as you're driving down the street. The second story, we put windows on three of the four sides. Again, that's just going to be used for storage, so those can be open, clear windows, letting some light in. We use cornices at the top of both of them, we provided some vertical elements with the CMU accents, and we feel that it really kind of fits in with the downtown area, the buildings that are across the street, down the street have similar elements.
The rooftop equipment, is there screening proposed?
So the parapet that's around the top, it's a flat-roof building, we have a parapet that sticks up about two and a half feet. The rooftop units are placed in the very center of that, of that second floor, so you would have to be almost 300 feet away in order to even see the very tip of it because it's so far in, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. So you said it's a two-and-a-half-foot parapet?
Yes, yep.
Mr. Pucci?
This might not be your question.
Okay.
Deliveries, where, where do they, where do the delivery trucks go? Are they going to have to stay on Prospect Ave? Or where on the site do they go when they're receiving?
I can tell you where the delivery door is.
Fair enough.
You guys want to speak to that?
We can answer that.
Okay.
Any other architectural, before you take off, related questions? Is there any facade lighting or is it all?
There's some accent light areas, like at the entry, it kind of lights up that wood facade, and then on the side facing the parking lot there, we have like some verbiage, it says, "Something fresh is always brewing." It may or may not count as a sign, so that'll kind of be worked out with signage and zoning when we go through that phase, but if that is applicable, we'll have some accent lighting to kind of light up that. Those little wooden areas basically get some lighting. And then we have a wall pack over the front, over the door, and recessed lighting and the canopies.
Okay. No ground lights up against the facade?
Not currently planned.
Other questions for the architect?
Mr. Weber had a question about a push-button, I believe, earlier.
Oh, yeah. Could you just adjust, yeah, the accessibility?
He said it was going to be on the standard now.
It's a require, yeah.
Some Dunkin' Donuts, no, no push-button handicap.
It, it depends when it was built, like I know it's, I think I want to say 2009 or so and on, so like whenever we remodel one, for example, we always add it. New stores immedi, get it anyways. May I approach and show you guys the one with the fence?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, if you're going to explain it or whatever, grab somebody's mic, that's all. Yeah, if you're gonna explain it or whatever, grab somebody's mic, that's all.
So, this is the version of the east elevation with the fencing system there. We've got seven feet to the top of the wall here, so it kind of just covers any normal car, um, there. And then I also brought- I also brought the interior floor plan. I know you guys probably don't care too much about it, but this whole corner right here, which is the main entrance corner, we've got the open glass and it's really open to the seating sales area, so it creates a nice, open environment there.
Do you, do you mind if we pass those around?
Yeah, sure. There's also a little mini site signage plan here, but I don't think you, we need that for this. Um, and then I do have samples too of the brick and the CMU, if you guys wanna see it.
Does anybody want, I mean, they can pass that around, I guess, too, if you want. Other questions for the architect? Um, while we're looking at this, I think there's a question regarding delivery, um, so maybe someone can address that at the same time?
Joe Carvalho, owner of 267 Main Street, um, to, to address the delivery, uh, issue. So, we have deliveries every night for our product deliveries. Those come in around two, two o'clock in the morning, and those come in on straight box trucks. So, they would just be coming off Prospect Street and backing right into the back door, and just taking the racks off the lift gate, wheeling them in, and leaving. And we have one bigger, uh, product delivery once a week. And I think for this store, probably be on a, either Wednesday morning or a Saturday morning. And what we do for that is we have the ability to get off-hours delivery on sites like this, where it would be a little tight while, while we're open. So, they would be there before we open, so-
So, all your deliveries get done when you're not open for business?
Not all. Uh, uh, on this site, it would be, because it's a tight site.
That, that, right, that's true.
Yeah, and so, and when we're talking about the daily product delivery, those are always done off-hours while we're closed.
Okay.
But the DCP, when we have the big trailer comes in, when they provide all the cups and lids and coffee and all that, th- that one is a once-a-week delivery, and we can manage that one to either A, come in on a straight box truck, or come in off-hours, or both. So, and that's probably what we're looking at here. And I've already spoken to people to kind of be prepared to add that to, to the list if we are so fortunate to be able to do this. So, that's where we're at. So, um, we should be able to do that.
Mr. Weber?
On the off-hours, the neighborhood, are they gonna be really impacted by the noise?
So, gosh, I, you know, the, the noise is minimal. I, the trucks come in, it'll make as much truck as a box truck can make, but it's just a matter of a, a lift gate that goes down, they wheel it off, and they take yesterday's racks and wheel it on, and lift gate up, and away they go. And they're there for five minutes, like literally, that's a quick, quick delivery on the product, so-
Yeah, it's just a trailer truck sometimes makes, can make either a lot of noise-
Yeah.
Or can make little noise, depending on the operator.
Yeah, the only trailer truck we would have maybe is that one week, once, once-a-week delivery. And again, that would be one time a week, and we could probably go Wednesday or Saturday. I'm thinking Saturday might be better, 'cause the traffic is even lower. If, if they spill into five or 5:30, if they have a truck breakdown or that kind of thing, there's just no traffic there.
That's just the neighborhood, it's only one I'm concerned on.
So, since I'm up here, I'd just like to add, uh, uh, address a couple more things, if I could?
Sure.
So, I've been in town now, it's gonna be 35 years in the fall. And, uh, I have the four locations, probably the, you know, uh, some of the toughest locations to run in all of New Hampshire, which is, uh, one being Canal Street, probably the worst, the toughest. And I've been doing this for 35 years. I, I'm, you know, this project, um, I'm a neighbor, I'm, I'm, I've been in the community for a long time. Um, I took that Canal Street store, knocked it down, rebuilt it to what it is today. Did the same thing at East Hollis Street. That was like embarrassing, kind of a shack, gas station there. And I was able to purchase it and do that. And I'm really looking forward to doing the same thing here, uh, and kind of beautifying that spot, 'cause it really does need it. Um, but the other thing, and I know Rick touched upon it, is that we're hands-on, like we manage our stores. Some of the stores that you see have issues. These guys are investors, and they come in here, they hijack my locations, I should have, to be honest. And, you know, they disappear. And not only they not manage their stores, but then, you know, they're not invested in the community either. You know, I, I'm very proud of the fact that, um, you know, I'm a longstanding sponsor with PAL, uh, the Nashua Children's Home, and, you know, the veterans, and all those kinds of things that we do here in town. Rick sits on the, the board for Harbor Homes, and I'm surprised he didn't mention that. And he's also been asked to sit on the board for PAL. So, these are the kinds of connections that are important to us and the things that we've done over the years. So, we're not gonna walk away from something. If it isn't perfect, we'll work with you. We'll work with everyone. We want this to, to be the best it can be. And Rick already knows, I told him, this opens, that's where you're gonna spend your time. And for a long time, it's gonna be seven days a week, and so, um, but that's what I've done for 35 years. So, um, again, I just, I wanted to let you know, we're part of this community. We're not gonna walk away from any little issues just because we opened the doors, that's not gonna happen. You know, and, and I hope that, you know, site-wise, I just wanted to say one thing. There is sort of a misnomer that there's a lot of walking traffic at that site. In fact, it's almost nonexistent. If you spend time there, th- there's no walking traffic. And I know that it's been a longstanding plan to extend downtown. And to extend downtown, you want walking traffic. And right now, your walking traffic stops at CVS and Seven Star Pizza, right here at this corner. And I could probably think of nothing else that could draw more people to walk into that, that, that direction than this location. And as far as, you know, needing bike racks, what kind of thing, that's, that's fine, that's easy one. And I hope that they come from across the street, from the, from the hospital and whatnot, but I'm not, I'm not sure that that will happen. But I know that the former mayor used to say that downtown should go from the hunt to the hunt. Well, this will, I think, help that a lot. Because like I say, that, that, I've spent, I've spent hours there now, and just, I've, I've actually parked there for a couple hours one time, just to see how much walking traffic there was. And I saw one elderly lady for two hours. And so, um, I'll challenge anybody to go out there and say, 'cause I know that that seems to be a really big concern about the walking traffic, and hopefully that will come, but it's not there now. So, just wanted to kind of address that. I don't know if that makes a difference, but I'll take any other questions, or?
Mr. Weber?
Just wanna say thank you for taking the site and improving it.
Thank you.
And, uh, it's, I think it's gonna be great for the site and great for the city.
Appreciate that.
Other questions for?
As far as the walking traffic goes, um, when you go a little bit further, Lake Street intersection, 200 Main Street, it does pick up again down that intersection.
There may be people coming from the plaza. I, I'm telling, I, I just tell you, right directly in front of this location, I've spent a lot of time. In fact, it was so funny, 'cause the first time Jackie and Chad met on-site, I, uh, after a while, we were talking, we were there a couple hours, just talking about details, and I actually then turned to them, and I said, you know, the strangest thing is, I haven't seen anybody walking. And as I was saying that, somebody was walking across, but, um, but you know, it just doesn't, it just doesn't have that kind of- and I don't, you know, I, again, I think that this will create that, at least to have a calling card to, something to, to go to.
Other questions? Alright, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant or their solace this time? Uh, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or have concerns with the plan? Please come on forward and state your name and address for the record, and, uh-
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is Todd Whitney. I live at 32 Gordon Street in Nashua, and I also have a law office. I have practiced law at One Prospect Street. I'm directly across Main Street from this property, this proposed use. Uh, and I have been there since 1988, and I've been in my home since, uh, I think 19, uh, about that same time. I was here at the zoning board meetings for this. I spoke in opposition at the zoning board. I would like, uh, by the way, I do have some notes I would like to just distribute, if I could approach and bring them up. I don't have enough for each member, but I have most of them. I have one for Attorney Proman I can give him. Uh, it's just one sheet of notes.
You can pass it to Mr. Ducrene, and we can, that's a copy we can have, or?
Yeah, you'd have to take about two or three per side.
Two or three per side. I didn't bring a full complement of eight, if you could share a little bit. Yeah, that's, you can take that. At, at the zoning board level, let's remember, the primary con- concern was the, um, the drive-through, and, uh, and the location of the drive-through being parallel to Main Street. Um, this was the concern of, initially, when the, when the project was first presented to the planning department, it was a concern of the planning department, it was the primary concern at the zoning board, it was my primary concern. And as a result, the, uh, project was sent back for a second pass with additional, um, additional aesthetic improvements to the drive-through. You have to remember, uh, that in, in this proposed situation, we have the drive-through parallel to the main drag, parallel to Main Street. You don't see that in Nashua, except for a few other locations. You see it, uh, and not, and not, you definitely don't see it downtown. You see it at the, uh, East Hollis McDonald's, the, uh, the window is right there along East Hollis with the traffic. You do see it at the Burger King across from Barnes and Noble, down in South Nashua. You see it a little bit at the Wendy's way up at the northwest corner of the city, just before the, the boundary. Uh, the actual, the actual window is around the corner, but you see the stack, um, on Main Street. So, my primary concern is that, is the aesthetics of the drive-through lane being directly right there on full display in downtown Nashua. I grew up in Nashua, to me, Nashua's a special city, and the most special part of Nashua is the downtown. And the definition of downtown is still the hunt to the hunt in a block or two in each direction. So, if, if the south part of downtown isn't as well-off as the nice part, that's no reason to not, uh, take a, a really hard look at this. You have to remember, when the project was first presented, the issue of the drive-through being front and center on full display was of such concern that the city, the city explored the possibility of concealing the drive-through in, like, a kind of a tunnel, so that the, the, um, there would be a, the side of the building would be on, uh, Main Street, and the, the cars would pass through. But that, after further consideration, that idea was rejected, because they didn't feel you could have cars in a tunnel, it wasn't safe. Um, but, uh, the, as it's been testified here before, um, the drive-through apparently is a must-have. The Dunkin's doesn't even wanna prove them without a drive-through, and I understand this lot is a little bit tight. And I don't doubt that this proposed, as proposed, it's functional. It would not flawlessly functional, it's substantially functional. But I'm not convinced that this is the one and the only configuration on this piece of property that, uh, would support a drive-through with a Dunkin's. I furnished you with, um, a picture of 260 Main, 260 Amherst Street, which is an even smaller lot and an even smaller, uh, even smaller structure. And the drive-through there is on the side. You generally see the drive-throughs on the side. You see it at Taco Bell in downtown Nashua, uh, you see it, um, at, you see it at the Walgreens, uh, prescription pharmacy drive-through. Uh, you see it in a lot of other places. That obscures, the, the drive-through window isn't right there for us all to see. Uh, if, I, I think this project lacks, may perhaps, a little more imagination and a little more effort. There, some exceptions, some exceptions were, have not been sought. For instance, this stack lane is 13, which I understand is more than what is required. That only raises the question, what could have been done with the extra property if they had submitted a plan that had only the required number of stack vehicles? Uh, this property has, I think it's 14 parking spots. The one at 260 Main has a lesser amount. What if they had asked for exception for perhaps less parking spots, freeing up more property to perhaps reconfigure the, the situation slightly, uh, approach from a different direction, and have the pickup window on the south side of the property, or, or reconfigure the, the lot entirely and have it on the west? We're kind of stuck in a, between a rock and a hard place. Under the master plan, in Nashua, we want the buildings up on the sidewalk, and we want the parking in back. That's great, except not, this is one that needs a drive-through, and they, and according to the applicant, the only possible way they can get the drive-through is to have it on full display with, parallel to the traffic in Nashua, in a pretty nice section of downtown. Uh, I think if they tried harder, re, looked, perhaps did away with maybe less dine- the testimony just here is that the drive-through right now is almost not, the walk-in traffic is almost nonexistent. Uh, you see a lot of properties that have, um, very small dine-in. Apparently, if the drive-through is the main attraction, where the money's gonna come from, do we need as much dine-in space as is presented? Could it primarily be more like Press Cafe across from Somerset Plaza, where there's a, a very small dine-in? That was a McDonald's, as you know, a very small dine-in, and all the action is in the drive-through. Uh, if, so if they shrunk the building a little bit, perhaps done away with, uh, some car spots at 260 Amherst, as shown in that satellite photo. I don't believe there even is a slip lane or an escape lane at 260 Amherst. I could be wrong on that, but from the satellite photo, it doesn't look like it. So, once, uh, and I would've spoken at, in opposition at the second zoning board hearing, but I was ill that night. Uh, we have this fence, which is window dressing. It's, it's better than nothing. Uh, you're gonna be walking on the sidewalk, the cars will be so close, you could reach through the fence and touch them, the ones that are stacked up in the, in the drive-through lane, waiting to get to their pickup window, the minivans, et cetera. Uh, wrought iron is a lovely architectural feature, uh, but it wouldn't be my first choice for concealment. Uh, I don't, I think it's a, the, the, the elevations are not here anymore, but, uh, you could do something perhaps with the width of the pillars, perhaps slightly wider, oh, thank you. Yeah, the pillars are not bad, but, um, the wrought iron, there's, no one suggested, no one suggested any vegetation. That might've helped. Uh, but, we're all focused on the details here, the details of how this would function, and some, at some point, things become so obvious that you tend to miss the big picture, kind of lose the forest for the tree, uh, lose the forest for all the trees. You don't have to accept a project that has the drive-through on full display right here in downtown Nashua. It's not the historic district, but it's not too far from the nice part of downtown. And, uh, when zoning approved it, I think it was kind of like, well, we've gone halfway. If, let's see if planning wants to take this. And, and through all this work, they've gained a favorable recommendation from the planning department, but that doesn't mean you have to accept it. We're all gonna be stuck with a drive-through, slow-moving drive-through, these windows, fast-moving, whatever, right there on full display. It would be much better if they came in on the side. You gotta remember, Walgreens was a compromise plan. Originally, the city wanted Walgreens all-fronted on the sidewalk. It isn't, because it was a compromise. They say, well, let's put it end-wise, let's have at least part of the building on the sidewalk, and most of it extends back. Something like that could be done. There's no reason why you have to accept this as proposed. You could send it back for a do-over. Uh, other than that, uh, you've got a few, the only other comments I would make are, there aren't enough waste receptacles here, some people are careless. Uh, and I definitely couldn't accept an, an audio crosswalk signal. I mean, not accept, I, I definitely would oppose that, because in the cold winter temperatures, though, that, there's, there's a sharp tone that sounds, uh, to alert the people, and then a signal that tells them to walk. If I have to hear that constantly while I'm in my office trying to get work done, that's gonna be a, a problem for me. But, um, again, I would say, let's not forget the fact that we've got, well, a wrought iron fence is the only thing that supposedly saves downtown Nashua from having to look at a stacked-up, uh, lane that's on full display at the front of the property. I think you should send them back for a do-over, try something different. Thank you.
Uh, it's, hang on a sec, Mr. Robbins?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first off, thank you for, for, for coming and, and presenting, and as you were, you were speaking with- And as you were speaking with obvious passion and concern, and I certainly respect that, one of the things that occurred to me just right off the bat, and this may not be a fair question, and I'll go with that if you would. Site's been derelict for 20 years. If you had to choose, this or the way it is?
Oh, I would choose the way it is because another suitor will come along. Sometimes you have to wait for love.
In another 20 years?
It won't be that long.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? The applicant liked to address some specific topics here.
Sure. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. Chad Brandon, Fieldstone Land Consultants. I just want to speak to, with all due respect, the inference that we haven't spent a lot of time on this project. We've been working on this concept for the better part of a year, and that's consisted... And I mentioned it briefly in my intro, many, many meetings with town staff members to really brainstorm the best layout for the site. That's what we have. And it's the best layout for the site, and as I stated earlier, for the community as well, because with this layout, we're able to accomplish a lot of off-site improvements, improvements to Prospect Street. We've looked at many different options for this property, and we've come back ultimately to this layout. It provides, number one, it meets a lot of the master plan components as far as the building situated forward. That was a huge thing when we met with, you know, city staff and reviewed the plan is, you know, trying to have that streetscape appearance. The elements that we're proposing along Main Street are right across the street. I think the hospital has a brick and wrought iron fence. And it doesn't do it a lot of justice when you're looking at, you know, a static elevation view, and it doesn't have some landscape features in it that we have incorporated into the plan as well. There's a perspective view of an older design that's on the cover sheet of the plan set that we submitted. And I think that perspective view on the cover sheet shows the fence, and it also shows some cars in the drive-through. And I think the key is it's a clean aesthetic look. The building is well-designed. We've worked hard with staff on incorporating a number of vertical elements and details that they've asked us to incorporate and revise. And we've agreed, one of the conditions is to work with, continue to work with them on tweaking some of those elements. But taking a look at the site itself, like the entrance has to be off of Prospect Street, right? So that sets you up for a layout. You can't come off of Main Street that close to a signalized intersection. That creates, you know, more chaos, if you will, from a traffic standpoint. And then when you start looking at, you know, if it's going to... It has to have a drive-through. Corporate requires a drive-through. So that's a requirement. They also require a partial bypass lane. There's... And you start weighing in some of these things. This layout fits best not only with the local ordinances, but also is the best plan for the site. We firmly believe that. We've vetted that out. We've spent a lot of time in the process. So... And I understand, you know, the gentleman that was up here didn't have the benefit of seeing us work through that process, but it's not something that we've just put on a plan and are coming here and presenting lightly. We're quite confident that this is the best plan for this project. The other thing that I'd like to point out is we meet all the regulations. We meet the stacking distance. We actually exceed the stacking distance regulations by a fair margin. We went to the zoning board based on guidance from staff in how this plan should be set up. We sought the variances out that we needed for the use on this site. And I just want to bring up that this property, this, a similar layout to this, not as good, but was approved, I think, back in 2001 on this site as well through the zoning board. And for whatever reason, didn't go forward at that time. But for two different companies to come up with a similar layout, I think speaks to the engineering logic that this is the best layout for this site when you're contemplating, you know, a drive-through element. So that, I think that addresses, you know, the concerns relative to the effort and the energy put into the plan. I would... Okay. Thank you.
Questions of the applicant? Or they're up there? Mr. Duker?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to have the architect, if she doesn't mind, to give her opinion regarding the concern brought by the attorney regarding the master plan and the treatment of the facade and the fence. If there's any further opportunity to make it any better?
Can I... I'll let the architect address that, but in all fairness, we were the ones kind of presenting the application. When we went to the zoning board, we presented, I think, five options on how to address the aesthetic elements along the Main Street corridor. There was different versions of fencing and landscaping, and this is the detail that they felt fit best in with the elements, frankly, that currently exist in a number of areas in the city. As it relates to the building architecture, the brick, you know, was one of the latest components that we incorporated into the plan because that was feedback that we received from staff. In fact, you can see on the plans that we submitted, I mean, that was a fairly recent revision because the plans we submitted in, I think in May, incorporated an older building design, which was, I think, a little more modern design, and it doesn't pull that brick element in. But I'll hand the floor over to the architect.
I don't believe it a point, but I know you went through extensively what you... How you came up with this, and Chad just reminded us. But based on what we just heard, are there any further opportunities to get closer to what he may be desiring?
As far as the building materials, I feel as though this honestly... We did present, as Chad mentioned, five different options of different materials, different heights, different configurations. We had brick and brick, like a recessed brick piece, so it was more of a solid wall, but it was too much. You know, we had brick with CMU, CMU piers with the brick in between. We had all wrought iron, and this honestly pulls a lot of the materials together. The brick from the building, the wrought iron fence, kind of that black color with the charcoal color on the coping. It kind of just pulls everything together, and it does look really nice. It's the nicest of the five options that we chose and... Or that we presented, and I think it was the right choice. You will obviously see the cars between the wrought iron pieces, but it's not going to... Your eye's not going to be drawn to it as you're driving. You're going to see a wall and a fence. You're not going to be like staring into... As you're walking, of course, you're going to see it. But I think we talked about pedestrians and what we think is happening.
Familiar with the master plan for the downtown where, as described, you want the sidewalk, the building right against the sidewalk?
Yes.
And the intention to, you know, continue doing that for the... As we go further south beyond East and West Hall Street? I mean, I know what it is, but I can't relate it. But as an architect, what is the real purpose for having that kind of arrangement as opposed to separate the building with a line of cars or what have you?
I feel like it's pedestrian access. I mean, it's... You're walking down the street, and all your buildings are right there, and your access is right there. I'm not sure that this... I know that this site obviously fits into that master plan, but I'm not sure based on what I've heard with pedestrian access that we have that same feeling that we would have a quarter of a mile down the road where all your business frontage is right there. It's kind of not the same feeling in this area as you drive by. But I think, as Chad mentioned, we did explore different options. We had the building, we had the drive-through window on the side, and then you'd only have six cars stacked to the street. We had the building pushed back. We thought about it with the parking lot in the front, and we weren't allowed to do that. So we've definitely explored different things, and I feel like we've beautified that street facade. I mean, all four sides of this building are decorative, so it's designed to suit the area.
So that whole idea of having the buildings up against that, it's more like a storefront situation?
Right.
Walk-in, walk-out?
Right.
Whereas Dunkin' Donuts, that's predominantly going to be servicing drive-through traffic. It's not serving that purpose?
We did... Well, where the crosswalk kind of brings people into the building, that side of the building does talk, speak to that. We have the storefront there. We have the entrance. We have everything kind of calling you to that side of the building, which is obviously visible from, as you're coming towards the building on that end. And that's where we're directing pedestrians into the building. You wouldn't... You don't want people to walk through the drive-through lane. So the wall kind of serves that purpose, too. People aren't kind of just walking into the site.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. At this point, I would give the... Anybody in the audience, if you do have one, any other further questions or concerns, this is sort of the last opportunity to voice it. You'd need to come forward if you do. Go ahead.
Tony Whitney again. I'll keep my remarks brief. And I don't doubt there was a substantial amount of work done. I think Chad has misinterpreted what I said. When I said not enough effort, I don't mean that there wasn't a lot of effort. I mean that there wasn't enough effort to try something else. And Chad is correct. He says, when he says this is the best option for the site, that's the problem. Yeah, it's the best one from their point of view. It's not the only one. And I believe, you know, I think the residents of Nashua leave it to you. We're stuck with the aesthetic of this for all eternity afterwards, and we had better get it right. Otherwise, we've got a, you know, a slow-moving drive-through right there on a nice part of Main Street for everybody to see. And it's supposedly been prettied up, but I think what else... The only other thing I wanted to say in rebuttal was that I think if you absolutely must have the drive-through in the front, you could have offered more concealment. I would have been happier with a solid wall that blocked up to say that the driver's head or something like that. But I'm not sure aesthetically that would be as pleasing. But... Oh, the last thing I wanted to say in rebuttal is, yeah, it's a tight site with difficult confines, but look at the other ones. I think if you look at Starbucks on... At the entrance of National Mall, they essentially have about the same area and a smaller footprint and a smaller drive-through. This... Small sites are not that uncommon. I've given you the example of 260 Amherst, and you can find other ones where they work with even less land, smaller structure, less parking lots. I still think something else could have been done, and you don't have to take it the way it is. You could... I think this is the best one from their point of view. I don't think it's the only one. And it should have been presented... If it's not ideal, it's not maximized, it's not optimized, then it might be more aesthetically pleasing for this part of downtown Nashua. That's all.
Thank you. At this point, I'd ask, is there any other questions that the board has for the applicant or staff with regard to the plan while we're in the hearing? Anything further?
You do have a communication from Economic Development Director.
Yep.
I referenced earlier. I didn't know if the board wanted to look at that.
Okay.
That was in your packet.
I did see that.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. At this point, I will close the hearing and move into the meeting and welcome any discussion that anybody has at this point. Mr. Barley?
I guess I would just start off on sort of the point we left off on, which is, I think, it's really a question of aesthetics. And, Mr. Robbins, I think your point was well-taken in terms of, you know, this design, even if it's not, you know, necessarily what some people might choose in terms of what this site location would be. It's a really substantial improvement if it was there. But beyond that, I mean, I think it... I actually think aesthetically, it looks pretty nice. I think the combination of the brick and wrought iron is nice. But beyond that, I don't know that there's... You know, if we push the building back further from the street and created more parking in front, for example, or created parking in front, I don't know that that necessarily would improve the aesthetic. So, I mean, in my personal view, I think they've done a pretty good job. And so I guess I'm not seeing something here where I would say there's another site design that I can envision that I would say, well, that's a better site design from an aesthetic perspective.
Mr. Peterson?
Someone mentioned they weren't allowed to put a parking lot right on Main Street. It had to be off to the side or in the back. And isn't there also an iron wrought fence right across the street at the hospital? So like, these two fences would be near each other and fit together?
Yeah, I think somebody mentioned that as well. Mr. Pucci?
I'm having a hard time with this. I... I'm not sure exactly what the reference to the master plan is and forcing buildings to be on the street. As a planning board member, I think it's awful. I look at CVS. Every time I drive down or up Main Street, I see a horrendous-looking power supply on the side of the building right on Main Street and a drive-through that was tucked in there. If you've ever gone into the CVS drive-through, trust me, you don't want to go back. It's unbelievable. And it's visible from the street. And it's all forced by moving that building forward and forcing the building to be right on the street. I feel uncomfortable when I'm coming up East Hall Street approaching Main Street. You can't see anything until you get right up to the line. Some... If the city thinks that's the way to go, I'm not going to... I'm not going to fight that. But I think this site would be far better off with the building towards the back inside corner, set up in a way that the drive-through lane and the stack lane was behind the building, which is the common way to do these, if it's going to be there. But that doesn't solve the problem of a 13-car stack. We... When we approved, the zoning board approved the Broad Street Dunkin' Donuts, we had a rule that they had to have a 15-car stack. And if they didn't have that, it had to come back to us. It couldn't... Planning couldn't approve it without that 15-car stack. East Hall Street backs up. I mean, I think these guys are great. I think they're probably the best people that could run it. But that doesn't mean it's going to work. To me, having a drive-through this close to this location in Main Street, I know the zoning board approved it. I just, I think it's cramming way too much into this little site. I know the city wants it there. I know it's good for the city to develop this land. I get all of that. I think this is going to be dangerous. I think it's going to cause problems with traffic. I just look at it like... I respect traffic engineers, but they're hired by the company that wants to convince us that this is a good idea. So you've got to take that kind of with a grain of salt, in my mind. There is no way... of salt, in my mind. There is no way that people are not gonna take a left coming out of this exit onto Main Street. The people are gonna be in here, they're gonna say, hmm, let me see. I'll go down Prospect Ave, go through the lights, sit there. All right, I'll head out that exit and hang a left when I can sneak through there. That's just human nature. It's what people do all the time. I always think that when I'm down at, at, the South Nashua, it's not a Dunkin' Donuts, it's another coffee shop that they put in there. They got approved for Dunkin' Donuts, but it's actually a, another shop, down right on Spit Brook. And you, you come out of that mall, and you can't take a left. You're supposed to take a right. I would say more than half the cars coming out of that mall take a left. They just do it.
But it's a move?
No, no, no.
No.
Well, I have. And I just think that, I think this is just too much for this area. I think it would be better if the building was in the back. If the city told them they can't do that, then that's not really fair to them, to, to send it back. If that was the edict from the city, then I, I'm gonna stay strictly with the, the impact of the traffic. Because even if they move the building, that's not gonna make any more stacking space. It's not gonna make that problem any better, to me. So, I'm not gonna belabor the point. I just don't think it's, I think it's too much for the site.
Mr. Peterson?
As a follow-up to what Mr. Rupucci was saying with regard to the traffic, today, around 5:00 PM, I was driving south on Main Street and had to make a left onto Prospect Street, and it was jammed up with cars. And that's typical day, I think, right there at that time of day. And this would just be, add more to that complex intersection of cars, everybody going at once.
Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I mean, I guess just sort of a, I'd make a general sort of overview point. I mean, and, and I understand your point that, you know, the applicant has hired the traffic engineer, so obviously you're saying, well, we gotta take into account that they're, they're trying to come up with a result that's gonna work for the applicant. But, but that's true of every expert that's hired by the applicant. And, and I think we have to look at some perspective, you know, I understand that folks have expressed concerns about, you know, the traffic flow and the impact. But I do think we have to ask ourselves, do we have, do we have anything that contradicts, you know, the testimony that we heard from the civil engineer, from the traffic engineer, and even from the applicant to the extent that they have, you know, expertise in, in, you know, in operating an existing Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through. So, I, I think the question is, if they're providing stacking for 13 cars, and that exceeds, as I understand what's required on the ordinance, do we have reason to think that, you know, do we have evidence to suggest that that stacking, as they proposed, is not sufficient? And I know that people, we have, everyone has their intuitions about how the site's gonna operate, but I think we have to look at it objectively as well, from, you know, what, what evidence do we have to suggest that that's, that that's not sufficient? And I just, I haven't heard that. And I would certainly leave it open to, to have somebody say, you know, no, for this reason, I, I think that the site wouldn't function properly, but...
Well, if I could...
Sure. Sir, Mr. Rupucci?
We get expert testimony, we get testimony from professionals, and when use boards are really not supposed to disregard that testimony. But, you can use your own experience, your personal experience, as a, as a citizen of Nashua and a member of the planning board, your common sense, if you will, to look at something and say, I don't agree that that's going to work because I've seen it not work in other places. So, I look at, yeah, we have a stack ordinance that's old. It's, it's, it wasn't contemplating the kind of stacking that Dunkin' Donuts does, which is far more than any other place. Like, there's a lot of other places that have drive-throughs, banks, for example, pharmacies. Believe it or not, the Staples down in South Nashua was actually authorized for a drive-through, which was never even used. But they don't get anywhere near the volume that Dunkin' Donuts gets. And when I see cars backing up on West Haller Street, I've seen cars backing up on Amherst Street, backing up into, as they approach that intersection on Main Street, to me, it's a common sense fact of life that that's what happens at Dunkin' Donuts. They back up into the roadway at certain times. They're, they're peak times. It's rare, but it happens. So, I think you can use your observations of what is gonna happen, if you have experience, which I think we do, or I do, in observing other locations that have similar setups.
Yeah. And, and I agree with that. And I, I agree that, you know, it's, it's reasonable to, as you said, use both common sense and your own experience. But I guess the only thing I would add to that is, there, I think, I do think there is a, a difference, a substantive difference between saying that, you know, this site, as constructed as may be the case with other Dunkin' Donuts sites, may not operate with perfect efficiency at all times of the day, you know, every day of the week. But I, I do think that's different than saying that the site is, is not functional, or that we have, you know, a material concern about traffic impact or safety or something like that. So, I, I think it's important to make that distinction. So, you know, we have a number of these other Dunkin' Donuts sites that seem, at least, you know, in most ways, most of the time, seem to function sufficiently well, you know, that they're not, that they're not causing material concerns. So, that's the way I would look at it. It's, because yes, it may be the case that at certain times of day, or, you know, in limited instances, you know, that there, that there may be sufficient traffic here to back up on the Prospect Avenue, for example. And maybe that causes some delays or some inconvenience. But I, like I said, I would, I would say, is there, do we have a material concern about traffic or safety, whether it's, you know, safety exiting, entering, or pedestrian safety? And I'm just, I'm not seeing that from what we've heard or what we've talked about.
Yeah, I mean, I, my read on this site is it is a little bit different than several of the sites that we've looked at and talked about in the past. I mean, the, the entrance from Prospect Ave, and that is a different arrangement than somebody off Amherst Street or one of the others. I think, myself, that is a good idea. I would not be in favor of this site entering and exiting directly off of Main Street. So, I think there's some benefit to that way that that's set up. I also think there's benefit to more parking because my own personal experience is, if I see any kind of queuing in the drive-through, is I pull in and park, you know? So, the way that the site is arranged that maximizes the parking, I think is a good thing. I think that tends to benefit, you know, less stacking. I, I don't think I'm super abnormal. I think, I think there's others like me that don't desire to sit in a stack and would just soon walk inside, you know? So, so I like the way that the lot is. With regard to the master plan, I think it's important for the project to foster that. I mean, I understand, you know, we do have an old master plan, but the concept of streetscaping is certainly still contemporary. And, you know, so I'm, I'm sort of, I'm in favor of that. I do like the, the wall. I mean, I was kind of in my head thinking back and forth, should it be solid, should it be open? I mean, certainly when you're driving, I mean, if anybody's driven down, the roads that have the dividers in the middle, when you're driving down the road, it looks like a wall, right? I mean, you, you don't see through the dividers when you're driving, when you're standing or looking across the road, like the, like the person with the public testimony talked about. I understand that. But I, I feel like there's a balance there. I'm not a huge fan of walls, either. They tend to become graffiti walls, which look really poor, I feel. We don't see a lot of gr- fences, like wrought iron fences, get graffiti on them. We see a lot of walls get graffiti on them, a lot. So, I, I think there's a benefit there to that type of surface, having, having like that wrought iron effect, so. So, that's, that's kind of, I, I like the aesthetic. I think the brick is a big addition to it. It is really gonna fit in well with the area. So, that, that's a positive thing in my mind. That's where I'm at. Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd just like to build for a minute on, on what you and Mr. Barley said. For example, having a wall would be horrible. It, it would be an invitation to get tagged, and I, and I think it would also be a, a very poor face toward the road. The folks who are presenting this have, in my opinion, as a layperson, they've done their homework, they've jumped through a lot of hoops, they have played the game according to all of the rules. There are some things here that if I, if I had my druthers, I might play with. But that's, that's not my position in this. My position as, as a member of this board is to look at it, evaluate it according to, to what our rules say we need to use to evaluate it, and make a decision one way or another. And where, whereas I, I still am a little concerned about the space, I don't see any better way to do it. My guess is that if there were a better way to do it, it would have bubbled up at some point during the process that everybody has gone through, including, you know, folks in the city and, and the folks sitting here. I can't, I can't see a reason not to approve this. And, and having said that, I, I want to, I want to thank the gentleman who, who came and, and spoke about this because I think it's very, very important that we not be complacent. I think it's very, very important that we always look at things critically. And I think it's very important that the folks in this room heard what you said and heard your concerns. And I suspect that this is not the first time. And I would suspect that, that one of the reasons we got as good a presentation from them as we did is because there are people like you who have concerns about this and want to make this the very best possible. I think everybody wants to make this the very best possible. So, I, my intention, absent anything else, would be to, to vote for this when it comes time to vote.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Duker?
Because of the traffic concerns especially. So, as this plan went through the city engineering review, led by Mr. Joe Mendola, who's back there, it did get a very thorough review, and, and Joe came up with a lot of sixty-something comments, many of them significant. And the applicant did address them, you know, adequately. But we still remained nervous about the traffic, knowing that we had had a pretty bad experience with the one in West Haller Street. I think I'm the only board member, was on the board at the time, Roger certainly was here. And until they were threatened with a revocation of the site plan, then they, they acted. They made some internal changes because the traffic was backing up, backing up on West Haller Street and creating a real hazardous situation for us. And so, we, in city engineering, did talk to Wayne Husband, because he's the one who really reviews this, that stuff. And he, he described it, his discussions with the applicants, traffic engineer, Mr. Hamm, and that they were working through all, all those issues. But nevertheless, the traffic analysis is based on assumptions, right? How many vehicles are coming this way and that way, and how many trips they're generating, and so on. So, you're faced with internal traffic issues that will have to be dealt by the applicant, and then you're faced with street traffic issues that would be a city problem and will be a problem for the traveling public. And so, that's why we came up with that requirement in the stipulation to have it revalued six months later, six months after opening. I think you don't see that often, but I think it's, it's a good idea that we get to revisit traffic. And we have a commitment from the applicant that they will do that. It's actually a requirement if the plan is approved with that condition. So, I think that's pretty much the only fallback that we have on the city side when it comes to dealing with, you know, the, the traffic situation that still we are nervous about.
So, what hap-
Go ahead, Mr. Rupucci.
What happens six months from now, if they build it, they do the new study, and traffic is far more intense than they expected it to be, and the problems exist there? What do you do? You, you say, oh, okay, well, I guess we shouldn't have done this?
They have to come up with mitigation measures.
But what are the- I don't see how that happens if, if we approve this site plan, and then six months from now, there is engineering information that says something different.
Well, what did they do at West Haller? They made, they did add mitigation measures there, right?
They had to do some-
Internal to the, to the site, they did.
Yes.
They didn't do any traffic control there. They just, they changed the way the drive-through wrapped around, if I'm not mistaken.
To be able to, they separated the parking from the drive-through.
Right.
Before they had conflicts.
Right. So, that's why I said they have a chain there, because they stop cars from coming through there for that reason. But anyway, I, I was just-
It was a-
As, I mean, if it's a concern of engineering, it's a concern of engineering. But I think it has to be a concern of engineering now, not six months from now.
Well, like you, Mr. Rupucci, talked about traffic that were experts, you know? Until you have real information, data, you know, contesting what they're presenting, then you have not a choice but to go along, but put some kind of a, something in place, a measure in place, a mechanism in place that you can come back and address. Now, I don't know what redesign will be, it's anybody's guess, if it results in, in a negative situation with, with six months later. But I can't do that speculation. I can't say, if you haven't demonstrated that you're providing a good level of service in, in your analysis, because they have, they have shown it's a, they're gonna maintain a good level of service in the traffic operations.
But that's, I mean, that's, that's true of every traffic report that's ever done, right? I mean, it's always based on, on assumptions, right? I mean, you can't-
That is true. And that's why we are saying, we want you to now test your assumptions six months later.
I'm just saying, it wouldn't be unique to this site. I mean, that's true of any traffic impact analysis, that's all.
That's true. I could say never have asked anybody to come back and, and check the- I could say never have asked anybody to come back and, and check the results.
Mr. Peterson?
And one thing to do at that six-month review is to take a closer look at the timing of the lights and optimize them all up and down Main Street so all the cars, you know, move at the right time. And that can generally go a long way towards relieving traffic jams if the lights are done right.
Ms. Harper?
Um, I, I just wanted to say one thing about the, the setup that, as a, a person that frequents these type of businesses a lot, that I like, is that Dunks has an option to order your food and coffee ahead of time before you get there. And the way the entrance is set up and the extra parking actually makes it more conducive for somebody that likes to do that.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I, I think the one thing I'd add, and it kinda goes along with Mr. Robbins here. I mean, since I've been on this board, I, I think this might be the third attempt at this site to get something on it. It's definitely a problem child site for our city. We do need to think about what that site can really support. I mean, I think we've seen housing, we've seen, like, other restaurant things, I mean-
Another commercial use.
Several other commercial uses. And they've had as many or more problems than the one that we're showing right here. I know that the housing-related sites were tough, you know, and this-
Because of the contamination?
Um, no, it was just the amount, you know, cars coming in and, and, you know, parking. And so, there's a pretty limited capability for this site to support. I mean, it's gotta be a high vol-, you know, it's, I think it's gotta be a reasonably high-volume site, or nobody's gonna buy it. You know, you know? It's, it's just not, it's not gonna pay back on, you know, sort of low-volume, kinda no-car site. We've seen a few attempts at that. It hasn't gone anywhere. And it's a pretty prominent location on the street. So, I think there is definite, part of this decision is, you know, and we talk, one of our criteria is, how does it, what does this do to the surrounding area and the neighborhood? I mean, this definitely elevates it. I mean, it's bad right now.
And this actually can produce more, I know there's no walk-in traffic, but I think that this can really produce things that come from and add to it in both directions. And it's gonna add flavor, really nice flavor, Dunkin's flavor, but to the, to the area. I mean, I think it's a beautiful setup. And I think it's beautiful, everything about it. And I think it's just gonna add to the neighborhood in a very positive way. So, I'm in favor of it.
All right, any further discussion? No? All right, anybody, I mean, stipulation-wise, you know, if anybody is thinking about things I, I think we should address, and I guess stormwater management, we have that now.
Right, they don't need, they don't need a waiver.
Stipulation number one is really not, there's, there's, there's no waiver being requested, so.
Can be deleted.
Um, could be deleted. I think the rest of these are-
Number, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Stipulation number six, we wanna change the date from April 26th to May 16th. If you do get updated comments today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know if there are any other, Mr. Peterson?
Where in the stipulations does it talk about the six-month review?
That's in the comments from the engineer.
But that's not in the, in the stipulations?
Well, it's, it's that, that's the letter from Joe, right?
Okay, so you'll refer to that.
Steve, is that right?
Yeah, it came in the, at the time it got tested tonight.
It's in the packet that we got tonight, the revised letter from May 16th.
So, that will be included?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody willing to make a motion?
Well, I'd make one, but I don't think anybody would support it. Up to you.
Free to all to make motions. But I'd appreciate if somebody made one.
Well, if nobody else is, is going to volunteer, then, um, Chair, I'll give you that opportunity.
Well, no, no, that would be, it would be wrong for me to make a motion that I vote against, so.
Okay. All right, I will make a motion to approve new business number two site plan, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan in arrow with section 190-146D and section 190-23F, with a total of eight stipulations. And that's reflecting the removal of the original stipulation one as a result of the, the applicant no longer requesting or requiring the waiver from the stormwater management standards. So, the existing stipulations two through three will be renumbered one through eight. And with a change to new stipulation, old stipulation number six, new stipulation number five, to change the date from April 26th to May 16th.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Varley to approve what the stipulations has stated. Do we have a second on that, Mr. Weber? Any further discussion or vote at this time? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? No? Okay, so we have one opposed, remainder approving, so the motion passes. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right, so, continuing on with our agenda, new business site plans, case number three, that's postponed at this time. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at the tentative agenda of the technical review meeting?
Look at it, doesn't look like there is anything.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that there isn't any regional impact.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Weber that there are no proposals of regional impact. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, my Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay. Any discussion items? Anybody? At this time? Mr. Robbins?
If, if this is, this is not so much a discussion item officially, is I just wanted to notify the board that my last meeting will be June 6th, which is the next meeting.
Okay.
And if I may take sixty seconds just to-
Sure.
-tell you about the place, the place that I'm going. I'm going to Sumter County in Florida. It has about 130,000 residents, which is a little bit smaller, a little bit bigger than Manchester. It has the oldest median age of any county in the country, 62.7. It also has a community, a senior citizens community, a large, large, large senior citizens community that several years ago had the highest STD rate of any municipality in the country.
I read that.
Too much Viagra. We believe everything we read on the internet. But that's true. Where are you going?
That is true.
I don't know.
We can talk about that later.
Sumter County is, much of the southern part of it is covered by something called the Green Swamp Wilderness Preserve. And it's about two, three-fifths the size of Hillsborough County. And we're in a place called The Villages, which is a, sort of a Disneyland for senior citizens. That's one of the things that, everybody goes around in golf carts and-
You're gonna hate it.
You know? I was just there last week. It was, I hated it, it was 85 degrees. And the wind was blowing. So, I just, I just, being as this is a land use kinda committee, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the land. And I don't know if they have a planning board down there, but if they do, at the very least, I'll attend a meeting and give them direction if they need it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You'd do a good job, too.
Thanks for all your time on the, on the board. We really appreciate it.
It's been a treat to be here, it really has.
Any further discussion items? Motion, anybody want a motion to-
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Mr. Weber to adjourn. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 9:40.
Yes.
You know what? Let's be grateful.
David, good luck in your new venture in Florida. Thank you very much. So, um, near The Villages, there's that big similar development built by Camp Hosi, Citrus Hills. Citrus Hills, I, I used to, you know, twenty years ago, I used to hear on television, all sorts of ads for Citrus Hills. Local developer.